Know when you're ready. Gerhardt, city's hearing. For the vacation, vacating a portion of the Hemlock Avenue right of way is called order. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the application and must provide their name and full mailing address if they wish to be notified of the decision. Continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code, the city zoning code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony shall be limited to those criteria and findings of fact, or to other city or state land use standards that a person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and body and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council or land use board of appeals, or to seek damages in circuit court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the planning committee, the city council for now, opportunity to present additional relevant evidence, or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing's body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance, to a time and date certain, or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony. Does anyone need to declare a conflict of interest, or ex parte contact, or personal bias at this time? On the council.
I went and visited the site.
Okay.
I did run into the applicant at a local hospital. We had a few words, but not about this.
Okay.
Well, I'm looking pretty well.
Okay.
And you visited the cyclist's home.
Yeah.
And I also just decided to visit with Sharon.
Okay. Is there, are there any challenges to the council's ability to make an impartial decision? From the audience? Anyone? No one? All right, we're going to Garrett for the staff report? Is that correct? Hey Garrett, are you there?
Hey, I'm here. Sorry about that.
No worries. So what we need to, from you is send updates on the staff reports, sir.
All right, so in terms of the actual staff report and the decision criteria, there's no updates, except that we have supplied a revised estimate of the compensation that counts area that is within the locally significant wetland boundary as being worth zero dollars. And areas outside of the locally significant wetland boundary has been worth the value as it's specified in our zoning ordinance, which is the value per square foot of the adjacent parcel divided in half. And so the staff report and ordinance have this revised value. In the last meeting, Chad Jacobs, our city attorney summarized his opinion that you have some discretion to modify the compensation amount that's specified in the zoning ordinance, and so staff went ahead and provided that revised compensation estimate to reflect zero value in the locally significant wetlands. Just as a reminder, you have discretion to decide whether or not you want to approve the vacation, and if you did approve it, the applicant would have to follow a series of steps afterwards, including compensating the city before the vacation would really take effect and get recorded with Clatsop County Recorder. I'll leave it at that, but I'm available to answer questions.
Okay, I've got a question for you on page 10, at the very top. It's the it's the only complete sentence on the very top. It says, "Staff do not understand the applicant's reason for vacating ROW south of that area most adjacent to Pacific Way." What does that mean? Because it appears this drawing, the drawing is from Pacific Way south, and I don't understand what that means as far as the applicant's recent reasoning. What, where are we on that?
Yeah, so in terms of what geography the staff report is referring to, it's referring to areas that are more than about fifty feet south of Pacific Way, and, and that's, that's that part of the staff report, we did get clarification in the hearing in September that we could have or should have used to update that statement, that the applicant clarified their intentions, and we would prepare those in the, the final findings after the decision, we'd at least put them there. They, a couple of the things that the applicant said were that they want to be able to clear potentially nuisance vegetation, or, or remove trash, remove some tree limbs, or brush so that they can see better back into the the area so that people like vagrants, or, or people who are back there, who shouldn't be back there, doing things they shouldn't be doing, are visible. And the applicant also has a structure that's not visible in aerial imagery, in satellite imagery that we didn't see before, but that you know, they, if it's back there, they should, they should own the land that it sits on. And so those are some of the reasons they identified for wanting to obtain the right of way.
Okay, so that's something I shouldn't concern myself with?
It, it is, it's, it's part of the the minimal decision criteria or guidance for the applicant is that they're supposed to provide the city with information on why they want to obtain it. But the criteria doesn't say that any one reason is better than another. It just says they have to come up with some reason and communicate that to you. And it wasn't really clear in the application, but they, they did provide that information in the last, in, in the first hearing in September.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else with a question?
Yeah, so Garrett, I just want to be clear about this. So this estimated compensation table that you put together excludes the wetland, and you're basing the wetland on not a wetland delineation. Is that correct?
That's correct. The wetland area is based on the locally significant wetland boundary established in our 2011 local wetlands inventory, and it's counted as having zero dollars in value.
Right, so potentially if we had a wetland delineation done, that would reduce the size of the wetland that you're basing this compensation on?
Uh, that is, yeah, based on, on Chad's onsite reconnaissance, he believes that the actual wetland boundary is smaller, that the act, the wetland is actually smaller than the locally significant wetlands boundary would suggest. Although I mean, I would say you, you never know until you have the final delineation and it's approved by the state, or until you have the delineation done, it's not done, but uh, but yeah, I mean, he, he says it's, it's pretty clear enough that it would be probably smaller than the boundary we have now. Yeah.
Okay, so wouldn't that raise your estimated compensation then?
Yes, it would. Yes.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have a question?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure it's a question. If, if the, if the actual wetlands are less than the locally significant wetland W four, which takes up most of that third property, it seems like it would be prudent to know how much of that is really wetland so that we get paid for all of the potential property that can be developed, which is, I get the drift that it's property that can be developed on?
Maybe, yeah.
Possible. It's not been the reason that we've been given.
No. Well, we could have a delineation done and make that as part of the conditions of approval, that it be done.
Can we make that as a part of the condition of what the compensation is going to be offered?
I don't know.
Yes. Yeah, you can specify that the final compensation amount is based on a wetland delineation. You can specify whether or not you're going to require that the delineation get approved by the state. I would recommend not requiring that because it would take several months. And in the last vacation, you all approved, I think in 2018, there was the estimated amount in the ordinance, but it did also say that it's that the compensation will be adjusted based on a final survey. So it'd be in the same spirit as that, the compensation would be adjusted based on the completed wetland delineation and final survey.
But not less than the twenty-eight or twenty-nine thousand?
Yes, and you can specify that it's not to be less than that if you'd like to.
Okay.
And who, who pays for the wetland delineation?
I would recommend not paying for that yourselves. I, unless unless you have some guarantee that the applicant will follow through and pay for the right of way and, and finish the deal. So that you'd, at lea, you'd that, there's a reasonable likelihood that this potentially just won't go through at all, and so you, if you pay for a delineation, it's, it's like you will have paid for that, and then you're left without selling the right of way and recuperating any costs at all. But
Okay, so you're, you're saying, you're saying Terry should pay for the wetlands delineation?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, there, there could be reason, you guys can talk about that and decide for yourselves, but like the, as a a, a basic recom, the default recommendation would be no, the city shouldn't pay for that.
And can we choose who does, even though he's paying for the delineation, can we choose who does the delineation?
I think it would be okay if you want to say that we have to approve who he selects, and that they have to be like a biologist, for example. And, and just going back to the last question, you, you could specify that the cost of the delineation can be discounted from the final compensation amount, if you want to do it that way. But I, I wouldn't just pay for it yourself upfront.
Any other questions? All right.
So is this all that we have to do for the the public hearing, or we have to go through all the other parts again?
I believe we need to go through the other parts, ask if there are any opponents. Are there any proponents? Are there any neutrals wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to close the hearing. Now we're going to move into city council meeting for October first, 2025, is called over. Is there a conflict of interest from any council? No, all the way around? All right, we're going to the minutes. Motion for the work session of the city council for Thursday, August 28th, 2025.
Move to approve the minutes for the work session of the city council Thursday, August 28th, 2025.
Second, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving to the next one, it's the public hearing and the regular meeting of the city council for Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay. Motion. Second, is there any discussion?
Uh, yeah, I have a question. On page six, Chad Jacobs said that he was going to try to retrieve Gerhardt files from the previous city attorney. And I just was wondering, at some point, could we be prized before that's that, please?
How about at the lawyer's report? Would that be all right with you, Chad? Okay. All right, all of us in favor of approving the work session and city council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That's done, moving on. Planning commission, everyone's got the planning commission, one of five pages. Any questions? All right. I went to the work session last night. And that's about all I'm going to report. All lineup, you're posted.
I had a number of meetings with Chad over the public safety building and the survey. I reviewed checks that were going out this month. And I attended the Clatsop County Housing Task Force. The state has funded some middle housing. The programs or grants or other types of funding that help close the gap between what a developer might make or generate the revenue for themselves by developing a larger house as opposed to a smaller house. Those programs exist and a lot of times spend understanding, you know, about those, and how to go about applying for such things. And I reviewed the LOC's revenue sources handout I got a while ago. That's all I have.
Okay, sure.
I met with Mark McFadden to ask him about near future public works needs as far as the space and facilities. Also, I am very happy to say that the Second Street property has been closed on by the North Coast Land Conservancy. They will start the process of turning this over to the city in approximately January. In the meantime, the North Coast Land Conservancy do not allow people and pets on their land unless they're a land, the person is a land steward or has other official business on the land. So this is not at this point in time in any way a public park for citizens of Gerhardt. I spent approximately three hours with two other people removing the ivy from all the trees out there, which was very gratifying. That's all.
President, I have nothing to report. All right. Chief Gregory?
All right, good evening. Being it's the first, our stats are not completely done, there's a few things that need to be wrapped up, so expect those in a couple of days. I did look at where we are currently, we're at case 503. At this time last year, our current number was 434, and we did not reach 503 until we got to November 11th. So we're overhead, over a month ahead. Our officers, including myself, have attended new Central Square training all throughout September, several classes. What it is, is our new records management system and computer aided dispatch. So it's been a lot of classes on that, trying to get familiarized with it. We're looking at rolling that out, going from our current system to the new system at the end of October. So it's a, it's been a lot going on, it's a, it's buy-in from every agency in the county, so we've had to get our heads wrapped, wrapped around that this, this month, so. Other than that, unless you have any questions, this is all I have. Yes.
I have one second question.
We're clear.
I've always been curious how the space has worked for you guys with the funding.
It's good, it's, it's much better.
Sort of simple.
It is, it has been very helpful. You know, how far into the future will it go? You know, that just depends on what we, what we have going on around now with the public safety building ideas. But right now, it's, it's adequate, and we're making the best of it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, chief, thank you. Chief?
Oh, mom. Thank you, sir. I was able to just barely get my stats done, I think about an hour ago. I beat you this time.
You did.
I beat you this time. So we had sixty-five total calls last month, thirty in the city, twenty in the district, and we sent aid for thirteen calls. You guys can see there is they split up to different fires and such. The one medical, and I'll story, I, I want to say, we went to that one because we were the move-up engine for the fire, so that's one of the jobs we do. We're there, moved up because of the fire, and since we are the in-service engine for that agency, we went to that call for it, and that's what the, uh, aid agreements takes care of for that. And then we received aid once for an animal recovery up in the tree. Seaside brought their lighter truck up and helped us get an animal that was stuck in a tree down. And then, as compared to last year, September last year, I had fifty-six calls for the month, and then we are currently at a hundred and twenty-one incidents ahead last year.
All right, any questions for the chief?
What was the animal in the tree?
It was a deceased owl. It was, they thought it was evil. My homeowner saw a bunch of crows attacking it, and it was stuck hanging upside down in a tree. When I got there, it was an owl. It was, it was stuck hanging out there, so Seaside brought their lighter truck and knocked this out. Got some great training in, placed it on the street, said it had a bad name. It went away. Except for that owl.
Except for that, only a grade, except for the doctor.
Yeah. All right, well, thanks.
Of course, because I agree with you.
You too. All right, Master of Sani.
So in the financial reports, in order to maintain a positive fund balance in the general fund, a forty thousand dollar inter-fund loan was transferred from the water reserve account. The loan revenue is in the general fund account ten zero zero nine zero, and the expenditure is in the water reserve account seventy-one seventy-one ninety-seven. There will be another loan transfer to support operating expenses in October. These inter-fund loan amounts will be paid back as soon as the city receives our property tax payments in November. So cities don't receive any current property tax payments for the month of July, August, September. Sometimes the last week in October, we start getting them. But we don't receive any current property tax, so sometimes the cash flow is very low during those months. So again, ideally, the city would have an adequate beginning fund balance to cover the expenses. However, as our spending outpaces our revenues, this is not an option, and we already anticipated this in the budgeting cycle last year. So these transfers were already publicly announced in our budget committee, went over by the budget, budget committee, submitted, so we already knew that, and it was done in our budgeting cycle. So it really was something we anticipated, and, and we hope not to have to have the full three hundred thousand that we anticipate. It looks like we'll probably need about two hundred and fifty thousand. And we'll pay that back to the water reserve when we get our property taxes in November. We're going to take a breath, because that's kind of what I'm going to talk about for the financial report in the packing. And so September's been a month of evaluating cash flows and focusing on the city's financial status. We have a little bit of revenue coming in, so we get to kind of see some of how some of our payments are doing. Unfortunately, Gerhardt's starting to look at a budget gap in the general fund, which is also happening to many other cities throughout Oregon. The simple reason is that the city's revenue sources are not keeping up with the rising operating costs, which will require some strategic revenue planning or result in some service reductions. According to an article published by OPB, the states of the budget troubles may be highest in rural Oregon, where local government agencies already run on a slim margin and few employees, so we fall right in that category. Gerhardt's general fund is experiencing revenue shortfall, however, the water operating fund is doing fine, it's doing well, so the focus of this conversation tonight really is on the general fund. Many of the city's general fund revenue sources are coming in lower than last year. Charter communication is down nine point two percent. Recology Western Oregon waste is down twenty-three point four percent. OLCC liquor tax is down four point one percent. Marijuana tax is down fourteen point four percent, and cigarette tax is down by twelve point six percent. So although some of those are not a lot, like cigarette tax, we don't make a lot, it's still in the wrong direction, right? So we still like to see a decrease. The city's stable transient room tax remains almost equal to last year, which is great, but we know that that's not going to grow. And I mean, hotels can increase costs, but we also lose permits on our short-term rentals, so we know that that's not going to see any substantial growth. Current property tax information is currently being prepared. We haven't seen the tables that the county releases yet, so we're not really sure. I mean, there shouldn't be any surprises there, but we, we are still kind of waiting to see the final impacts of those PRC revenue credits that they had withheld for some appeals that were filed on some very big revenues property taxpayers. So we'll see how that all plays out, and hopefully it will play out fine, but it's still something we should be aware of, and we're anxiously waiting. City staff prepare, prepared a lean balanced general fund budget, which did not include an ending fund balance or contingency. That's not unusual, but we also knew preparing that budget that it was going to be tight. At this point, this year, the city is not anticipating a general fund deficit, so we're not expecting it to be negative. But we are expecting that the majority of it will be spent, which means that next year our carryover will be very little. And at this point, our carryover was three hundred and fifty-four thousand, and we're, if we spend all of that, we won't have that for revenue next year, so we'll be that much short already. Although the League of Oregon Cities has recognized the crisis facing cities like Gerhardt, and has funded efforts to study the viability of revenue reforms, this is appreciated. However, changes will probably not come quickly enough to continue Gerhardt's current surface level next year. Councilor Gould and Councilor Cochrane did attend the LOC small meetings me, meeting a couple of months ago, she referenced, where the LOC presented an Oregon Local Revenue Tools Guidebook, which I think I gave to the two last members that didn't have them. So it's a great resource, it has lots of information. It, it's, it applies to small and large cities, so we're going to be taking a look at that. This resource will be shared with all the counselors as they This resource will be shared with all the councilors, as I said, and, and look at different revenue options. City staff are aware that they need to watch expenditures and look for efficiencies. Uh, we need to be very focused on what Geerhart can do to improve its financial outlook. I remind everyone that's looking at some of our neighboring cities budgets, um, because it can be very frustrating for them, because some of those communities have taken different pathways than Geerhart. For example, uh, Cannon Beach has forty-four regular employees, a little budget of ninety-three million dollars, a general fund budget of twelve million dollars, and they don't have a fire department in their budget, so that whole department is supported, um, by a rural fire district. Geerhart has thirteen employees, uh, a total budget of eight point three million, and a general fund budget of three million. The city is looking at creating a revenue strategy team to focus on maintaining a balanced budget and increasing our reserves, while trying to preserve the goals of our comp plan. That'll be important when we're looking at different revenue sources, because if we pick something, if, if city staff think that they're going to pick something that the community doesn't support, we're not, well, obviously, it's not gonna happen, because some of the sources require, uh, voter input. If you know anyone that might be interested, or might be a good fit for this team, but we'll have them reach out to Chatter Eye, and we, we'd like to talk to them, and we're gonna look at getting this up and running and see what we can do. Do some brainstorming, good to have some outside, I'd love to have somebody from the planning commission, and maybe somebody from the budget committee, just because can tax them too, and see where it goes.
That's slated to start when?
I'm hoping that we can have a committee put together by the end, uh, probably mid-November.
Sir. Are you gonna reach out to some of the budget committee people?
I think Chad and I haven't talked about who, but I don't know if it'll be, uh, just a public invite for anybody that might be interested. But no, we haven't, we haven't talked to anybody yet.
I mean, could call them.
Well, we could, you know, putting it out to the public and, and giving them the opportunity as well, giving the opportunity, you know, across the board to the planning commission, see if anybody is interested in the budget committee, and then see who comes up, rather than having, you know, Justin and I choose, you know, who might that be? And then it would be up to the, uh, the mayor, uh, to actually put that committee together, uh, once we have some recommendations. Um, that's one of the powers of the mayor in Geerhart. And so we'll start recording on where we're at in November, but we probably won't have a lot, you know, much work done until mid-November on this. It's getting what that Justin was talking about. But we'll start recording on this, we've been meeting with staff multiple times, having discussions, making adjustments to our methods, staying with core capabilities and what we need to fund versus what we want to fund. Uh, and we're just tightening our belts a little bit. We've got some expenses that may not happen, depending on how we perform. So we might not be in as terrible shape as, you know, or in a rough position at the moment, but this is something long-term we have to solve. And, uh, Geerhart, you know, being one of the lowest taxing districts in Oregon, uh, we also operate on such a small fund, as we said yesterday, I reminded you that Cannon Beach, again, they don't have, uh, this in the general fund, because it's paid by the taxpayers at a dollar ninety-eight per thousand. And just to, uh, through our, um, calculations, to be comparative to that, it looks like the city of Geerhart Fire Department is running on about nineteen cents per thousand. And if you extrapolate that out, approximately the same with police, maybe a little less, about eighteen, seventeen cents per thousand. So we've been very, uh, very agreeable over the years, it's just starting to catch up to us.
Would any action that we want to take later on after the committee finds some recommendations or something, would that be done in time for the budget cycle next year?
If we do anything that requires a vote, it would follow a very similar pathway to the, um, public safety building. So that timeline would have to be met, so we, if we, if we did anything that required voter approval, because there are revenue sources that do have voter approval associated with them, we would want to make sure that we have that in.
How about if we did something that did require voter approval?
Then we can do it anytime. And we can, i- if we don't have it resolved by the time we have our first budget committee meeting, which we could push back a little bit, then we could, um, uh, prepare a budget and then do a supplemental budget.
But how can you prepare a budget not knowing of some of the things?
You have to prepare a budget that you know you can afford.
So we would prepare a budget that would be actual, and then one with the changes if they were tapped?
Yeah.
You propose both.
I mean, it's sort of feels like the house is burning down around us, to me.
Well, it's been a long time, you know, and it is tight, and what Justin was discussing is also the design of Geerhart. Low, commercial, um, but yeah, I mean, there's been major cost increases that we've been all absorbing since COVID. Uh, and we've done a good job of absorbing it, but I think we've absorbed as much as we can, and we need to get serious about talking about these other revenues.
Yeah, I just meant as far as timeline getting discussed and determined and.
It's gonna take some time, but I think we can get there.
And the thing about Geerhart's revenue sources, is Geerhart's revenue sources are very stable, right? I mean, we do have some decreases, which is unfortunate, and some of those are state revenue share, like the cigarette tax and the OLCC. We did know, although I didn't anticipate that much of a decrease because of our population numbers, that they were gonna, we were gonna be getting less money. So some of those we kind of knew, and so we're not, we're not, we're growing, but just not fast enough. We're going to have to do something in order to help that, and I know you all know that, but it's starting to become a bigger issue.
Where is the, uh, amount that we pay the judge for court?
It is in Fund fifteen. Okay. Professional services, down below.
Oh, okay, fifteen, yeah, fifteen, fifteen forty.
Mm-hmm.
So it's zero the month.
Yeah, he usually only turns in a bill about twice a year. He'll, he'll wait, he usually just does it about twice, so there'll be like a five thousand dollar payment to him.
Okay, so the budget's eight thousand, so.
Yeah, he, he's never been more than that, but one never knows, it seems like planning was gonna be affordable too.
Planning?
Yeah, we just have needed more and more.
No.
Who, who knew Pickham, who knew? Overly is clear, all of the things.
What's I do with the marijuana tax going down?
I don't know. One of our stores are not performing well. One is performing solidly and continues to outpace the other one. The other one, I have heard it is like a boutique marijuana shop, so it's a little bit more expensive, and I don't know, people just not interested in spending the extra money. But they have not been doing as well as the other one.
Part of the greater kind of economic downturn that's happening.
That it?
That's it.
Thank you very much, Justin.
Thank you.
All right, Chad Jacobs.
Good evening, Mayor Council, uh, Chad Jacobs, uh, from the interim city attorney's office. Um, don't really have much to report, we're continuing to work with staff on various projects, uh, on, related to the question related to the files. I don't really have much more of an update than last month, we, you know, continue to be in contact with the attorneys who are handling Peter's estate, and as far as, you know, if they come across something or gain access to electronic files, they're gonna share them with us. Um, they just haven't been able to do so, and so, um, like I mentioned last month, we do have a small box of paper files, which, you know, are mostly, uh, not anything of substance, um, so there, there's not a lot that we can really bank on, unfortunately. Um, it's just one of those situations, as a solo practitioner, there wasn't really, uh, backups in place to be able to access those files, and, and, you know, everything's password protected, of course, and we just can't access those password protected files, so it's sort of stuck in the ethernet or wherever, you know, that stuff is stored.
Okay, well, thank you, Chad.
I have a question.
You have a question?
Yeah, so how do we prevent that from happening in the future?
Well, I think you have two things, one is that, um, you ensure that the attorney that you're working with, um, you know, if they're at a firm like ours, uh, obviously, there, you know, if something happens to one of us, then, you know, there's other people who have access to all of our files. We have a, a file management system that's in place that allows access. If you end up working with a solo practitioner again, I think those are part of the questions that you want to ask them, is, you know, how does your file management system work? What sort of backup do you have? If you're unavailable, is there a way that we can access them? And so you know, and they can set up files and passwords, you know, that are specific to Geerhart, share that password, for example, with your city administrator, so if something happens to them, then you would have that password and be able to access them. Um, you know, but with a larger firm like ours, that's not an issue, because we've got, you know, multiple people who have access to all of our files, so.
Any other questions? Thanks again, Chad. All right, Chad.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Council, I, my administrative report, you see the meetings and coordination, let me know if you have any questions about any of those. It's been busy, it feels like a week ago we had a city council meeting, and here we are. Um, under community enforcement, so I wanted to update you on the tidal wetlands area, uh, situation, uh, that the homeowner is, uh, put up three, uh, no trespassing signs along, uh, his property, uh, in, or near, uh, the tidal zone, uh, the Mount Leniakosi, which is property that they own. And I've investigated, uh, this issue, I've had two meetings, uh, with the homeowner and some back and forth email. I've also discussed this with our attorney, and then did research on, uh, all sorts of, uh, things having to do with public trust doctrine, entitled influenced waters. Uh, so far, right at the moment, my, um, take on this is that those signs are illegal. That they are, uh, that I don't think the city is able to go and, uh, require, or require that the property owner remove them. Uh, the locations of the signs have been checked, uh, that they're not entitled to influence waters. There is, uh, there, even at the top of the King Tides, uh, this area is not get wet. It is also located outside of our known wetland mapped areas. Uh, we used, uh, uh, GIS and GPS to look at the signs and where the wetlands were located, uh, in that particular area, and it is my take in there that they are outside the wetlands, looking at the flora fauna in that area, and there it's just grass. Um, and so the wetland sign prohibition does not apply here, because it's not considered wetland. Uh, the tidally influenced waters having to do with, uh, the public trust doctrine, uh, the Oregon titlions and navigable waters are indeed subject to public trust doctrine, but, uh, these are not necessarily in the titlions or in the navigable waters, they are outside, uh, of those two areas. Um, and then the signs are on an upland private property area, not below the ordinary high waterline or public trust, uh, so public trust arguments probably do not apply here. Uh, questions, the titlen ownership belong with Oregon Department of State lands, it's not the city to decide that, so that if a concerned citizen wanted to, uh, further investigate and say that they believe that these are entitled, DSL would be the appropriate, um, organization to help us through that, but at this point, I would say that they're not. Under landowner rights, uh, a landowner ORS one oh five seven one hundred says that the landowner has certain things that they can do to post their property against trespass, and to go backwards a little bit, I just want to let you know that this person does own this land. Uh, and then there are a few residents, locals, and visitors that are using that land to transport over, get to the beach and, uh, through their private property, uh, to, uh, the escuary. And some people are going through this private property and then cutting across his yard out onto the Little Beach Lane area. And that is what has got the, um, property owner a little concerned about, that's why he posted that. And it seems that even though since he's posted that, people are still, uh, trespassing and going through there, as evidenced by the little trail camera that he set up, and there's some familiar faces walking back and forth on that land. Uh, so I understand that he does have a situation, plus there's been some evidence, some transients going back and forth there, although we keep an eye open for it, it is a quiet area. Uh, so the landlord has rights to be able to post those, as far as how it works with the city's own code, the permanent signs, you can have one permanent sign of about us, one square feet attached to the building, but then you can have temporary signs, plural, up to six square feet allowed. And just doing quick calculations, he's well on that with the three signs that he's posted. The only thing that we found is that he did not have a sign permit, and I believe the landlord is working on that to make up for that, will pay the sign permit fee. Um, and, uh, so the signs are small, freestanding posts, and they meet, they, they appear to meet the temporary sign allowance. What is a temporary sign? Uh, Geerhart does not, uh, define what temporary is, so I have placed a definition of about three hundred and sixty-five days minus one of being temporary, because really I couldn't fight that in court with anything different. I could come up with any number, but the judge will look at it and say, is that temporary? Uh, you know, yes, it is, because it's not all year long. So it's all, you know, because we don't have that definition, I don't have really necessarily any code to hold anybody to temporary signs. But we do hold them to the size and the amount of signs that they have, and as we do with the business owners that are out on the highway, you see all the A-frame signs that are out for most of the year. Those are permitted signs, and they're allowed to do that, and the R-one zone has that same sort of thing. So the city, really, we can only enforce zoning. Um, next steps is we'll continue to monitor replacement for code compliance. I'll continue to make sure that we get the, uh, sign permit taken care of, and approved or denied, depending on what they want to do. If they're doing something similar to what they're doing now, the likelihood is that they would be approved for our zoning code. Uh, residents with concerns about titlen ownership or public access should be referred to the Department of State lands, and they can help them through that. Uh, and, uh, so this is just kind of a narrow code-based, um, review, not having to do about ownership or titlions necessarily, but that, that looks like, uh, what my investigation has found. Uh, I've spent quite a few hours going through this, and the meetings that I've had with people, discussing this with attorneys, and, uh, I think that's where the city is at at this moment. I would recommend that the people, um, that are walking that area, you know, do, um, uh, appreciate that that's private land, and that owner has the right, uh, as far as I can see, to post it for no trespassing, and potentially trespass people out their property if it continues. Do you have any questions about all of that?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So, uh, are, uh, Chad and Garrett in complete agreement with what you all just said?
We've been talking with Garrett, and I talked to Chad about this, and, uh, yeah, they didn't have any issue with what I have. Garrett wants to take one more look at the map with me, we're gonna do that tomorrow, uh, to ensure that the signs are in fact out of what was probably a little wetland, uh, it's definitely out of the, uh, area that has to do with the A-two aquatic zone, because that's very much just over the water itself. Um, and so, uh, yeah, I've been in communication with both of them. And, uh, do you others?
So the temporary sign, is that the one that was put in place, uh, after the big sign public loop when we tried to pass the fire station in twenty-two? Is that the argument you're talking about?
That's all election signs, that's, uh, completely different. This is the ordinance that's been in effect since prior to me.
Uh-huh.
It says temporary sign. It says temporary signs up to six square feet are allowed in the R1 zone. There's no definition for temporary.
Did we make a temp, did we make a, a definition when we did the political signs for temporary?
I think that had to do with election season, yes.
Well, this isn't a question. My recommendation would be that we look at that zoning code and perhaps tighten that up a little bit, since three hundred and sixty-four days seems like a long time for a temporary sign.
But if a guy builds a fence around his property and keeps it, keeps the general public out of there, keeps his liability down, what are you gonna do then?
You're not gonna do anything.
I'm not gonna do anything.
Hey, substay off his property.
So we might do some things to help people understand where these boundaries are as well. I'm looking at the ends of the rightways that are uh near the Little Beach Road as potentially putting signs that say no beach access. Uh, in order to just get people to understand that there is no beach access or trails through the city. Um, but the rest would be up to the landlord uh that we're talking about, uh, as long as they keep it in the side lanes.
So you don't want to get DSL involved?
They, I wouldn't mind at all if somebody wants to go ahead and do that, but I
Not in the city.
In the work, when they're looking at the public trust doctrine, it really has to do with navigable waters, the land that is underneath the water. There is some work about escuary, but uh in my initial estimations, the information that Deanna was um purporting is, is not entirely accurate.
Any other questions for Chad?
Uh, you're not going to?
I got a couple more things. Uh, uh, Ms. Sharon was asking me about the memorial bench program update, uh, and I know this one's been taking way too long. So just to update you on this, the community got together uh with the council and decided that we were going to place about twenty-one new benches around town. That's not including the oceanfront side. Uh, currently, we have about thirty-three people who are currently on the bench request list. Uh, we have about twenty-one locations around town where benches would be a good fit. Uh, processing, so beginning this month, uh, the first five requesters on the list will be contacted in order of their original requests and invited with me to choose from the available sites. Uh, we will continue working down the list from there. We're gonna require that the people who choose their site pay for the bench and installation prior to us ordering it. We'll order the bench, put the concrete down, and install a bench for these folks, including a uh small plaque that will be added to this as part of the memorial. Uh, each bench currently will cost about twelve hundred dollars um per bench. That includes the bench, the plaque, the concrete, the installation, the L brackets that'll take to uh hold the benches down. Uh, and uh, you know, pricing has been changing on a few things, but the benches haven't changed prices that much, which is nice. The oceanfront bench sites are still not yet available. They require June's alteration permit from the state of Oregon. Uh, we submitted it once. They request more information, and I will have the request submitted by the November council meeting. I'll report to you back then on that. Uh, so calls will begin next week, uh, to begin putting these benches in. Slowly, we'll get those uh, we'll take care of it. Progress updates will be shared to you as we move forward. Any questions about that?
You, you've got a new bench installed downtown.
Yeah, so with the bench in downtown, we're already coming apart. Um, and so we replaced one. I received two others that began correct size, so we're just waiting for the others two to come, uh, so that the full size, we have four foot instead of five foot. Uh, we'll figure out how to utilize those benches. Uh, so, yeah, and then we'll finish those up as soon as we get them. And one, one had a bad part to it when it came and I was putting it together. Um, one of the, uh, silly skid unit I'm working with, um, Barry Helsner Hammond, uh, on that, they're looking at some of the documentation uh to move that project forward, and Mark will be updating that on us next month. Mark McFatt is gonna be coming in and updating a lot of other public works things as well. Uh, work session, we got that done last night. Uh, it was a good meeting, and we are working on a survey to go out with some new options for uh the public regarding the public safety building. Uh, and so I should be able to turn that information around and have it to you as a draft early next. Water rights, uh, there's nothing to report. We submitted all the information almost five months ago, and it is still sitting with government warranty. Uh, I checked the website again today. There's no action on it yet. Uh, they happen to change the status that we have from received. So that's where we are with that. They did warn us that it would be between six and nine months before they even looked at it. Had a meeting with Representative Jabadi. Uh, him and I spoke about the public safety building. We spoke about about its campground drainage issue. Uh, and what was the third thing that I discussed with him? I'm sorry, I didn't write it down. Public safety building, he was very interested in hearing about the unfunded mandated portion of the public safety building and the, and that. He's gonna take a look and see if there are any availabilities, monies to help us through this situation and report back to me. Didn't sound like there was anything um right out in the open that he was gonna give it a shot and then like call back. He wants to be kept abreast of those projects and uh uh, it was a good conversation.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
What's a shed violation?
Well, we just had somebody put a print board, shed, you know, one of those sheds you can buy from Home Depot or what have you, too close to a uh uh, the front property line. There's fifteen foot setback in there within that by ten feet, so uh, but it's, that's been uh, it's almost managed. I, I think he's about ready to get to move it at work with the landlord, and they, they didn't have any problem moving it. So that's what that was.
That it?
That's it, sir.
All right, thanks, Chad. Okay, we have one visitor, and that is David Carr. Right?
Correct.
Chad?
Hi, good afternoon, good evening. David Carr, the executive director of the Sunset Empire Transportation District. I've been there about ninety days, so um, I'm um new to the district, but I uh went to high school in Astoria, grade school, middle school, and my family, my mother and my brothers live there. So I'm quite familiar with the area. Um, we run through this area and uh I just want to thank you for your support and uh let you know that we're doing the best we can um to uh get out the community and um provide service. Um, there was a recent uh state legislative package that passed, so that will give us some uh, a little bit more stability. Uh, I don't know if you're familiar with our history, but uh I kind of come into uh just a lot of stuff that we have to work on and uh looking at our revenues and uh was very concerning to see that that was gonna potentially be uh either eliminated or held up, and uh with that passage, it gives us some breathing room. Uh, so um, we feel that we're going to be able to continue operations, and I'm just assured of people that we're gonna be helping running for, you know, at least the next, for the foreseeable future. But, you know, the federal money can change, the state money can change, and these things are still happening. We're looking at, we're pretty, pretty decent financial shape, and uh one of the things we're doing in this area, well, actually, it's more seaside, we're doing a micro transit zone. So it was like kind of blooper for transit, and so they can call this number, get, arrange to get a ride, and they'll pick them up from their home with the, their, the their uh bus stop and take them to where they want to go in the zone or connect them to the bus. Now, we'll give them opportunity to take um a ride from their home to the hospital. They get a ride from uh there to the bus and live in Astoria or Warrington, where you can get a beach. Uh, so we're trying to be innovative. We don't have a lot of money, so it's a small pilot, and it'll be done by the end of the year. Uh, we're looking at ways to kind of transform from fixed route, where you have a bus going back and forth all day, to more on-demand. But that's going to take us a little time. We have to get an app that works and some of that. So we're, we're constantly looking for opportunities to do our job better. Um, I don't know the details of our stops in this area, but uh we're trying to improve those. Uh, and so, you know, I may reach out to you and if there's any opportunity to have any discussion about that. Uh, I would, I would certainly appreciate your time. Um, we want to be better. We want to do better. Uh, we give a hundred dollar rights a year in this county. We really support a lot of people that, like I said, they're going to the doctor, they're gonna get groceries, gonna visit their family. You know, we really tie that we're kind of seeing, we're tying these folks together, people that are homebound, you can get out. People that are in wheelchairs, we can transport them to where they want to go. So we provide a lot of that service, and we just want to be able to do better. We want to do it with um working with you and determine what your needs might be, what we can do better from your perspective, so we'd like to hear your input. And then, of course, any questions you have for me, I handed out my card, so you have my direct contact information. You can call me directly anytime. If you have any questions now, I can certainly answer them.
Are there, like, times of the day where, like, uh, uh seaside to Astoria or, you know, maybe with the stop in Gearheart, are there times of the day where the bus might be mortal than, than others?
Well, I think naturally this is for early in the morning, late evening, people commuting. Uh, but uh throughout the day is pretty consistent. The, the challenge for us is we don't have we don't operate with enough, I guess, bandwidth. During the middle of the day, we actually take a break, because we can't serve the area in the middle of the day is the, the least um utilized period. Some places have a peak in the middle of the day. We have peaks on either end. So running a bus in the middle of the day is just expensive as the other time, so we have a gap. We want to fill up the gap. Um, we, we have discussions about adding another plus to the route, so it, whereas one's going south and one's going north, so we can improve that service. Those things will be looking at and then coming fiscal year with additional funds once we secure those. We can't add service. We're, we're kind of restricted, but within the service that we provide, we want to do the job. We want to do probably a little more frequency, um, and, you know, we got some new buses, so they're they're smaller ones, so then we can get in there and, as we can see, they're, they're, they serve well for micro. So we're hoping and through innovation and through being fiscally conservative and uh, you know, seeing our way through the the next few years, the, the delays in the federal fund, and we're delayed almost a year getting our federal fund. So, and it's a reimbursement, so we're spending the money, and we'll get reimbursed for that. And this, but unfortunately, this went in nine months to twelve months later, so it's creating a cash flow situation for us, but we're pretty well positioned. We're really, there's a couple of thin ones there, but we think that we can, we, we'll be able to navigate that, and then once we get the initial funds, we'll be able to go through the next, you know, two bienniums and be able to get there. What the legislature does after that is really gonna be pivotal for what we do. Because if they sunset it, and they don't give anything for us, then rural transit's in real trouble. If they don't, or they modify it, then we'll be able to do other things, and uh at that, I'm gonna come back again and tell you either how great things are going, or um, well, maybe more of the challenges we might be facing. But it's my intent to try to reach out to the different areas. I, I went to seaside, I went to Astoria, I went to that's a uh county, and I have, I think Cannon Beach yet to go, and it's my intent to come out and visit, meet you in person, give you my card, let you know I'm available, uh, and I'm certainly willing to work with you in any way we can to, like I said, we want to be better.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you. Yeah, it's uh kind of real, kind of weird, because I'm home and I went to a high school football game the other day, and the stadium's in the wrong place. But it's really nice to be home and uh see my mom and those kind of things. It's nice.
Great, thank you, David.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah. All right. So we're going to uh public communications written in oral, and we have a letter from Elizabeth. I want to say Lily, but um, that is?
Yes, sir.
About uh garbage being left at the house. I take this as probably a short-term rental?
It is, and I think it's been resolved. We got ahold of the uh property owners, and they understand the issue, and they're gonna make some corrections.
Okay. Great. So anyone wishing to address the city council concerning items of interest not on the agenda may do so at this time. All remarks will be limited to five minutes per person. Requests to comment electronically must be submitted by email to thecityrecorder@info@cityofgearhart.com no later than four PM the day of the meeting. In-person attendees wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to the meeting. Val Mori, you're up.
Uh, good evening, councilors and mayor. I'm Val Mori, 271 D Street, Gearheart, Oregon. Uh, I wanted to thank you for your work session yesterday. Uh, I want to thank each of you for the work you put on the public service building over the last, seemed like forever. We feel like thank you. Uh, when I listen to Justine tonight, we've got a really dire situation within our city, as you all acknowledge, I think, that you need to have a handle on how we're spending money going forward. I'm gonna suggest you do not do any public surveys that changes the location out of downtown. You've taken process that is, people saying they don't want to be in another park. They voted two to one against maintenance of highlands. Take it out of play, for a goal is to get public safety buildings done or facilities around the core of the city. We need to simplify and stay focused on this side. Um, in the current financial situation we have in the country, there'd be a challenge when you get thirty-seven, thirty-five million, thirty-four million dollar bond passed. I am so pleased that you're considering doing a remodel, reconstruction, and locating something in decor, and I, you'll see yes signs on both of our properties along Pacific Way. But please do not sit down and make representations at your cost without something already somewhat designed. And certainly don't sit back and say you're doing a remodel and it's gonna have a ten-year life. You know, I look at this as being a fi, a pretty simple project, a five-year, five million dollar project with a probably thirty-year life. It's not a ten-year life project. You can misrepresent it. If your goal is to get something built, you can misrepresent it. So please look closer at that before you go to a survey. Not that we have just on this side, go to a survey and put them side by side. But don't send out round numbers without facts. So thank you, but again, thank you for all your effort on trying to get something done. We desperately need a public safety building. Thank you.
Thank you, Val. All right, is there anyone else wishing to speak who didn't sign in?
Yeah, unfortunately. I had Tom T's two-nine-two, Woodland Avenue. I'd like to talk a little bit about STRs. Um, coming up next week, I think there's a possibility we're gonna be losing one. And we started out with about a hundred, we're down to, I think I was talking to Chad, sixty-six. That's an income to the city. I'm not saying we need more, but how much less do we need? How, what's that bottom number do we want? Do we want to get it down to zero and lose that income, or maybe stop now? And, and make it fifty, and if it drops to a little fifty, that goes into a lottery for people that want to have one, and they can put their name in for it, have a drawing for it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Tom. All right. We're gonna move along. Ordinance nine fifty, an ordinance vacating a portion of the Hemlock Avenue right of way. Chad, will you read the synopsis, even though we just talked about this?
Will do, and it looks like uh Mr. Longberg is here with us as well. Uh, so the staff report is the cash ordinance nine fifty proposes a vacating portion, or excuse me, a portion of Hemlock Avenue as indicated in supporting documents. City council has the authority of vacating the right of way following proper procedures, and it's done so previously, and will hear any or street. Garrett has provided an updated staff report embedded below. Since the September city council meeting, staff conducted a site evaluation based on council's direction and met on-site with two of the councilors. Following that evaluation, Garrett, folks and I reprimanded the compensation table on page nine to reflect the actual amount of potential developable land minus a uh wetlands uh determination and donation. In September, council continued public hearing, the street vacation. In September, council continued public hearing of the street vacation through a series of motions and tabled the elements to this being specific changes to the ordinance draft or outline the council options on the final page. Yes? So, moving forward, we have to get council to signal whether or not to vacate the portion based on the original format of the number, the adopted format that we put in, or with more stipulations, a new number, or do nothing. The, Mr. Loenberg is here, I'm sure he's available for any questions that you might have. That is our report.
All right. Does anyone have a motion? So we can go to discussion?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 950 with the six conditions of approval that are listed on page 14, with the exception of number four, because I think when I add number seven, the amount 29,001 or zero will be different. And number seven reads obtained wetlands delineation or applicant obtained wetlands delineation and staff revised payment amount for what we think is an increased amount of buildable lands once that's done, unless calculate that and subtract the amount of the wetlands delineation. Can I have page 14?
Yeah, it's on the original.
Here. It's on your desk, I believe. At least it was online.
It was online.
It's on your desk. Your desk. It was here when you came. It's right here.
It was right under the fire department log.
Sorry. My pages go from 13 to 15. That's why there was a printed one on your desk.
Okay. This up down was some new numbering system.
Yeah. We're starting with a numbering system.
I found it. Thank you. Okay.
So you want to strike for, add seven? Are you going to just?
I'm not saying strike for, I'm saying the compensation amount will change.
Okay.
Well, do we want to reword that final survey to a wetland delineation survey? I made a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure what to do with procedure over here. This is something new. Mr. Loenberg missed the public hearing portion of this. I have had some conversations with Mr. Loenberg about this and I gave him a heads up on what the new amounts were approximately. And he has pretty strong feelings about it. And maybe something that you would want to open up and talk to him about and ask him if his feelings are about this estimate and then that by health guide your next move.
Okay.
I'll withdraw the motion.
You withdraw the motion. By consensus, do you have a problem with Mr. Loenberg speaking to us about this? No?
No.
Yeah, I have no problem at all.
Okay. Terry, you want to speak to us as to what you talked with Chad about the compensation amount? Or... I'm putting you on the spot because obviously we had the hearing already.
Well, Chad said about half, that's five, and I'm right exactly. That's why I'm a full machine, five. It's fortunate that my danderay to government squad. So, anyway. My payment has not changed much for his worthless land to anybody. It's not buildable for any of them. Also does is clean up property, which I would like to do. We, this week, we went and cleaned up the wetlands. I noticed that some of my employees have installed branches and stuff down there. So we cleaned all that out, but also noticed a camp down there for which I ran off. It has zero value for me to do this other than that, it cleans up. It's non-buildable, it's non, it's non-buildable for anybody. It's wetlands. Part of the state lands will not allow it. And because whoever's been there surveying for you all, I don't know if they're aware of the seting systems that are there and also preventing more building. So I don't think DQ is going to allow any difference in the seting systems that are there because of it. So the situation there is a big situation that has no possible variance. So I am willing to give a small amount of money to help, which will also clear other tax laws. But there's no reason for me to pay 29, 20, or whatever. There's, there's no reason for me to pay it. So with that being said, you all can make your decisions.
Okay, thank you.
So can we make one of our, oh, sorry. We're not in discussion. Any other questions?
You do have a question, go ahead.
Maybe it's for Garrett. Can we make one of our conditions of approval that no building can occur on any of that land?
Yes, I'm trying to think. If there would be... You'd have to have like a reason that's directly related to our code or impacts to the public. Otherwise, that might be like an unconstitutional exaction. I'd have to think about that a little bit. I'm not sure off the top of my head if we could just make that requirement that the area can't be developed. We could specify that the wetland can't be developed, that's already specified in the code. We could specify that, yeah, go ahead.
Well, okay, if that's, if it's problematic, can we do something as a condition of approval along the lines of if building is proposed and/or does occur, that the city would be owed more money? Just, I'm just...
Chad Jacobs has a hand up.
Okay, just a second, Terry. Chad, you're going to weigh in on this?
Yeah, so I'm just trying to think outside the box here a little bit. And, you know, as Garrett's pointing out, when we impose certain types of conditions, they can be deemed a taking. But if we reach an agreement with a property owner in, in a manner that is in the form of a contract, then it's not a taking. So one of the things that we could potentially do is we could basically impose the $29,000 fee, but then also as a condition authorize the city to pay, basically waive that fee in exchange for a no-build easement over the property. And so, you know, that would be sort of a contractual agreement. Then we would record that easement and that wouldn't be necessarily a condition that would be subject to the takings. So you could do something along those lines to sort of make it creative. And basically, what would we be doing? We'd be paying that money in exchange for the easement. So therefore, the, the idea is that the property owner is receiving the, the value of the easement. And so therefore, it's not a taking because we provided that just compensation and that value.
Okay, thank you. Terry, what do you have to say?
Well, in, in other land purchases that I have been involved in, the city, if they're giving it to me, it's one thing. If they're selling it to me, there can be a stipulation put. I think the attorney can tell you that. When you sell a piece of ground, you can put some stipulations on it by selling it. So if you sold it to me for a dollar, that is a land sale and it can be regulated prior to closing.
Okay.
The other, I mean, the other thing is, we vacate that property and we, Mr. Loenberg owns it. He's going to be paying taxes on it. Right now, we're not getting any taxes.
Sure.
So is there a motion waiting to be had?
Can I ask Terry another question?
Okay.
Sorry. It's kind of complicated. Are you willing to make anything for it?
Well, I am.
How much?
And I told Chad today that I'm willing to give $5,000 for your current costs for, for this procedure that we're doing. I don't, I don't feel that. It's against my better judgment to do that, but it's also against my good judgment to try to do something that will help the city. I'm not here to village. So I'm on to, to do that. I'm not willing to do a delineation or something. As long as you stipulate in the sales agreement that that, that land will never be melted.
Okay.
Yes.
Another question. Sorry, I'm thinking on my feet here. So if we stipulate that the, it's not buildable, does that also prevent any of the buildings that are already there from being expanded?
You can stipulate in the sale, same thing as you can stipulate anything else that goes along with that, and turn it into, agree with me on that, you can make stipulations in land sales.
So if I could just interject here, the problem is that we're not selling this property, we're vacating the property. And it's just a part of the code that requires that if we're doing a street vacation, that we receive some sort of compensation. So it's not that the city owns the property and be simple like you would normally think about selling your house to someone else. We don't own the property in that manner. So it wouldn't be a typical sale, it's the street vacation, which is why we have some of the concerns that Garrett's raising. But again, I, I think you could basically purchase an easement or an interest in that property along the lines of what we're talking about. And basically, as a condition of approval, say that you either have to pay the $29,140 or the city in exchange, you know, for whatever amount you say, in exchange for an easement, you know, to prohibit any building on that property will basically waive a certain amount, you know, as compensation for that easement.
Okay. A motion? Shall we get this written up with that kind of language? Because right now, we're sitting here going, we don't have the conditions of approval, page 14 on our packet paper. And for us to write that out right now, I don't think is going to be possible to write it legally. So is that possible to have that done so we can?
So shouldn't the conditions be spelled out on the?
They are.
They are spelled out. No, on the contract. Let me finish. On the ordinance, shouldn't the conditions be spelled out on the ordinance? Like, when I read the ordinance, I'm like, well, what, what conditions are they talking about?
Third, whereas.
We can spell them out on the ordinance and re-present it at the next meeting if you'd like us to and capture all of the conditions that you've also been discussing that Chad Jacobs just summarized. If you'd like to have it all laid out before voting.
That would feel neater to me, but we probably need to reword four.
Yeah.
So do we want to do that now so that they know what to write out for this?
Well, is there a consensus that 5,000 is a reasonable amount?
Once you make your dis, I mean, there's two ways to look at it. We could bring you that, or if you have your wishes, we will make that happen prior to finishing the deal. Once you make a motion and you say these are the conditions that I want, we'll go ahead and hold ourselves and Mr. Loenberg, if you can, hold those conditions. If you want a complete document, as Garrett was saying, then yeah, we could wait till next month, bring this back again. And thought out that if you let us know your conditions, we can make that happen. Either way.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, either one, but I've been saying four is not correct, so.
Right. Right, so you would make a motion and say that these are the conditions that we'd like to have? You know, one through seven be fine, but number four, we would like to offer to add? Whatever. And then staff will make those corrections and then finish the deal.
Okay.
You're going to make a motion?
She would.
I understood that.
I'll make a motion that we, that we vacate the property and that, with the conditions that the, that the councilors concerned about. And the compensation would be $29,140. But we're going to give him back $24,140.
Why can't we just have it as the compensation of $5,000 without changing?
Well, we can.
Yeah, but he said we couldn't do that because the vacating is different than selling.
Correct.
It's not a typical sale, so you have to have a purpose of the easement. The easement would be a condition.
Okay.
So you sell it, but then they get the credit back if they follow those conditions.
All right.
Okay.
So, is there a second?
Second, but I like what Justine just said for four. And Preston. So put what you two just said into four.
Correct.
Okay.
Is there a number seven then? No, that one's on the question.
No.
You second, right?
Yes.
Is there any discussion?
So, so let me just be clear. You guys are going to write this out with the amended number four and give it back to us.
No.
No, you made a motion to approve it.
Correct.
And you seconded it.
And it is going to be done the way we've said. The six conditions, number four being modified.
Sorry.
Okay? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay. It passed. All right, moving on. Old business. Anyone wishing to comment on old business may do so by raising their hand. This is City Business Flood Hazard Overlay Zone, Fazada, briefing. This is city business flood hazard overlay zone, FAHOSDA briefing.
The following will be a Uh, this is where I would like to have Garrett uh root the council and just forward our app with the flood hazard overlay zone and hang on. Okay.
All right. So as you know, you approved ordinance nine forty seven in August, which updated our flood hazard overlay zone to essentially be the Oregon model flood hazard uh management ordinance. So um that was created in, I think, twenty twenty and that many cities throughout Oregon use. And that corrected some real issues that we had with our flood hazard overlay zone. Um, when you did that, you also declined to update the zone to include FEMA's new endangered species act pre-implementation compliance measures. Um, right after making that decision, um, some members of council expressed interest in bringing the pre-implementation compliance measures version back to city council for a vote. Um, and um, staff had suggested that we could do that by reopening uh the hearing that had been closed the month before. Um, and after thinking of that some more, uh, I thought better of it and 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 thought that we should actually um to be compliant legally and less subject to appeals and more in the spirit of our own public participation policies and the state uh land use planning laws on public participation. Um, restart the hearing at the planning commission and do this essentially from scratch. Um, so next week, we're having a planning commission hearing to amend the flood hazard overlay zone with the Pickham uh standards included. And we've gone through the public notice requirements for that. Um, so that everyone who owns property in the flood hazard overlay zone is getting a new notice that this is on the table again. Um, if we had just reopened a city council hearing, I think that there would have been people who paid attention to our last notice up through perhaps June and then thought this isn't happening based on the discussions we had, and I don't need to pay attention anymore. And so this is just letting everyone know this is back on the table. We'll have a planning commission hearing this week. Staff is going to recommend that the planning commission essentially recommend approval or not object to adoption of the Pickham standards. And put the ball in your court at city council uh where you can decide when and whether or not to adopt the Pickham standards. Um, this is gonna be, I think, the right way to go because uh you had previously asked, for example, what happens if FEMA calls us out for not having done this yet? Um, what they do, that's sort of the last step before suspending a city or a county from the National Flood Insurance Program is they send a ninety day notice. If the ball is in your court with a planning commission hearing done, um, we can have a city council hearing and have a second reading and have it adopted within ninety days. So there's that that we're thinking about. Um, that staff is thinking about. There's also some ongoing litigation from um an organization called Oregonians for Flood Plane uh protection um that has challenged FEMA's implementation uh requiring local governments to do this. And that's that started last winter or spring. And there's um, there's some expectation that there'll be some resolution to that litigation in November or so. And so the idea is that we want to be ready to respond to that. It could include a delay of of implementation, or it could include a change to the requirements. And we just want to be ready for a potential ninety day notice from FEMA. We want to be ready to respond to the outcomes of that litigation and any changes that FEMA makes to what's required. Um, and so we're trying to have this planning commission hearing next week. And um it'll be back to you after that if they, uh, if planning commission makes a recommendation one way or the other. Um, the only way that it wouldn't be available to you for a hearing in November, if you want to have one then, uh, would be if planning commission decides to continue their own hearing because they want to um, they want to deliberate over it more or take take more testimony. So that's a brief summary of where we are. I included in this item um, a selection of slides from a FEMA presentation that provides an overview of the actual Pickham requirements, like what will be required of the city and property owners if the ordinance is adopted, just to help you refamiliarize yourself with it. I'm not gonna um go through the slides right now, um, in the interest of time unless you you actually ask me to in your questions, but I just wanted to give you that update. We're having a hearing next week and we'll be back in November uh with more information.
Just one question. Uh, Garrett, so uh I I thought I read that uh FEMA is still accepting comments. So I think maybe to the end of this week or something on the Pickham. So that makes me feel like it's still kind of an open issue for them.
Um, so FEMA is accepting comments on um the environmental impact statement for not the pre-implementation compliance measures, but the permanent implementation of um the of their plan for protecting endangered species and flood plants. So the these pre-implementation compliance measures are something that FEMA wanted to get done. They wanted cities and counties to get them done right away, like last year. And they've they've delayed that a few times. Um, we we were supposed to have it done by the end of August was the last deadline that passed. Um, but they were pre-implementation compliance measures. The comments they're taking until October sixth are comments on permanent implementation compliance measures, you could say. And it's it's the in uh environmental impact statement um that they've published. And we're preparing some comments that are, you know, technical in nature. We see, we've seen a couple of like potential mistakes in the data they were using um for that. But that that is, it shouldn't be taken as an indication that this is still unresolved.
Thank you.
All right, Garrett, thank you. We're gonna move to city attorney services RFP update. Chad?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Council. We received one uh proposal uh for attorney services. I and after issuing the RFP in July and reopening in September, again, we only received the one, the single bid. Uh, I conducted a quick pre-interview uh with the applicant Robert and found him to be a very nice guy. Uh, he seems to know a lot about law, has a lot of experience. And I would recommend that we conduct and uh or schedule a formal interview uh with him during the October thirtieth work session or somewhere there within uh assuming that he is available to appear in person. And that is his desire also to, he just currently resides in Ranco Alaska. Would like to be here uh to meet you folks and to introduce himself and to interview. Uh, but I think we should remain flexible on the timing if adjustments are needed. This will allow your deliberation, preparation for a decision in November meeting while preserving public transparency and legal compliance. So I recommend that the council would read a formal interview of the applicant. Then the staff will set that up with the intention to do this uh sometime uh or during the November city council meeting. Uh, or depending on how the schedule is worked out, we might have to adjust. Um, currently, we have Chad Jacobs and his team at E H who have been helping us out. Uh, and I think uh just to remain true to them and appreciation for their services, we should continue to uh look for these applicants and work through this. Uh, not recommending making a recommendation that we hire. I just, uh, my recommendation would be that the council is interested.
So you said November city council, but it says there October thirtieth work session. Well, the the work session would be to do the interview potentially, and then November would be the time to uh make a decision.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, I thought that's what your call.
Okay.
I was reading out of order.
Okay.
Same.
Could we um sort of give him a heads up and write, send him questions that we might be asking him in the interview?
Sure. Uh, and I would recommend that we do so that prior to uh the interview that we set it up with some uh proposed questions, get them to him in advance. Doesn't mean that we can't ask other questions that may come up. But yeah, I think that would be most appropriate. That's a good idea. So I just want a consensus to move forward.
Yes.
Uh, with this gentleman to begin the conversation with him, and then I'll report back to you as soon as I hear. And we'll start getting that scheduled up. But I wanted to more inform you on what's happening. Um, with that, but yeah, I think he's very much worthy of a discussion.
Do you have a CV or something that's provided you?
Uh, he, we do. I have some information and we'll provide that to you.
Look at that somehow. Okay, just in the office is fine.
Sure. But he'll provide more information as well, and we'll get a little bit more down into the meeting this week also.
So how do you want to do the questions, Jim?
Uh, I'll discuss it with Chad Jacobs as well and see if they have a set of questions. I've already got a set of questions worked up that I've been working on. We'll take those. And then I'll propose them to you and decide in that list what you want to ask.
Okay, so you're gonna give us questions that you come up with.
Sure, I'll do that as well. But I would also be open to any questions at city council I have in advance as well. And you can forward those to me. I hope you have to get that. But uh, yeah, we haven't, I haven't interviewed uh an attorney in almost fourteen years.
I mean, I I don't want to be redundant. So if you have questions that you already are proposing be asked, and they're the same as my question, then I don't need to submit.
I'll give you mine as a primer, and then that way we can come up with a better answer. How about, that's a good idea, sure. Sorry.
So, I mean, can we get a consensus?
Yes.
Yes? And did you say yes?
He said go for it.
Go for it? Oh. Okay.
Thank you.
Having done that, let's move on to new business. Anyone wishing to comment on new business? Right now, we're discussing a liquor license application reviewed for a one-time. This is a one-time thing, right?
Hmm, it's an event application.
I guess the only questions I have have to do with things that weren't filled out on the application. So there's questions that were left blank, like under license information and a license type is blank. On the next one, the question, event information mandatory criteria says, have you ever possessed a license to sell alcoholic beverages? Yes or no? It's not answered.
Well, to answer your further question, this is a special event license application. And that's, uh, if you look at the very top of the OLCC application, it says that also halfway down or half can uh or event details, there is an event date of ten fifteen twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Uh, event time also with what they're going to be offering.
And that's PM, right? That's not AM to PM?
I'm gonna assume that, sir, but I don't know for sure.
I don't think anybody's gonna be in there at five thirty in the morning.
Yeah. Other people at five thirty in the morning, they could then, they could do it.
They wrote PM.
It's only college kids.
So this is a special event license. I think we've done a couple of these before, and it's for a one-time events that they'd like to have.
This is quite the program. PM is written in there. On the other page it is. On the other page it's P.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty special, uh, simple special event license. This is not for a full-time license. This is for a one-time event uh that the business is doing to promote business. Bring the community together.
And they're, and they're gonna be served a beer and wine, and they also have food service available.
And they're selling wine.
Those.
We will give the public opportunity to sample and buy wine while enjoying store sales.
Yeah.
Yep. It says, if you wish to sell alcohol at your event, you must obtain a temporary sales license permit from the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. So I don't see that yet on the documentation here.
Well.
Can I chime in? Can I chime in?
That would be Ms. Christie.
Hi. So they can't obtain it until we sign off on it. They are only required to submit uh screenshots basically of of what they would submit to the OLCC, but then you'll notice that there's a local government recommendation section. That is what Chad fills out after you approve the event. If this is the same process that the firefighters ball has to go through, they are exempt from the OLCC license, I believe, because they are a five oh one C three. And then the wedding that was held in the park was exempt from the OLCC license because they were not selling, they were only consuming.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the liquor license.
Okay.
Nice, okay.
Now we can have discussion if you'd like.
Just one other question. I'm assuming all this is gonna be held inside their building.
Yes.
Has to.
Um, I'm sure people will be out. She might have items from her store outside. I think that the, you know, the alcohol, maybe I don't see it specifically stated or whether or not that's even required.
I, I mean, they, they.
I mean, if somebody was to have a outdoor event, we'd allow it.
They're saying that Robin Bear will enforce laws, so she.
That's the person who holds their own liquor license as far as being able to serve. So they have to uphold the OLCC laws as a permit holder to serve alcohol.
Okay, so she can serve and people can take their alcohol outdoors then?
I don't think we have any rules against it. Uh, they just wouldn't be able to log right now.
I'm gonna go to the chief here.
So I used to review these for the city side as a detective sergeant and they put that out of the chain. So what you have is you have two different licenses here. You should have it on purpose uh for the short-term uh date is specified. And if they're selling alcohol and can leave the facility, it's called an off-purpose license. So that's, I think that's what she's getting at. So if you have if you have someone that's allowing off-purpose sale, then they should be able to walk outside with said alcohol if it's off-purpose.
And this is an off-premise and a tasting and an on-premise.
It's all free. So it should cover all of those things. And I'm curious, they would have to go outside.
Okay.
Oh, it says no alcohol consumption. I mean, it's not checked or, okay? Okay. Being dead horse says indoors only.
Yeah, they didn't check outdoor consumption, but not check them.
On the, on the last page where it says, your heart city liquor license application time says five thirty PM to eight PM.
Yeah.
Yeah. We've got that.
So don't they have to check that box?
I don't know what they're doing. They filled this out, so I'm going to go with this is what they intend to do. I don't know that they're gonna be indoor or outdoor, but if they don't check the um, the box for outdoor, I'm gonna assume that they're not serving it outdoor.
Do you want to just run that by them?
I could, if you want to. But I don't know that it'll be the latest on the next meeting.
Oh, I'm not advocating the lane. I'm just saying they need to be clear about we need to be clear about what they're coming, probably.
I'll ask them if they meant to not check it or check. I'll ask them if they meant to not check it or check it. Yeah, I'll update you.
It should just be indoor. That's fine. If they buy a bottle, they can walk off with it.
Can you? I'm more still in discussion.
You're all right. I would operate here wishing on something like that. If they, if they decided to say, ooh, we meant to check it, and then they check it, then they can have it outdoor, but not after this meeting. So after this meeting and you approve it, it's approved as they filled it out. I'll ask what their intentions are, but I'm assuming that it's the same as how they filled it out.
I mean, doesn't the police department have to know which it is?
They do. They didn't check it, so I'm assuming that's.
Okay.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ask. All right. Next, domestic violence proclamation. Is Paige gonna read this?
Paige here.
I will keep she made it.
Okay. So we've always since this started had October as the domestic violence month. So I'm gonna read this, if it's by consensus, if it's all right with you ladies. Preston, is it all right with you?
Yeah, go ahead.
Whereas the first domestic violence month was observed in October nineteen eighty-seven, the same year that saw the initiation of the first national domestic violence toll-free hotline. And in eighteen, nineteen eighty-nine, Congress designated October as the National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And whereas domestic violence is a pattern of assaultive and coercive behaviors, including physical, physiological, sexual, and economic abuse, social, social isolation and stalking that are used to maintain power and control over a person's intimate partner. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's dignity, privacy, security, safety, and basic human rights, and victims should have help to find the compassion, comfort, and healing they need. And whereas one in every three women and one in four men in the US experience rape, physical violence, and or stalking by an intimate partner in their lifetime, domestic violence is the single largest cause of injury and homicide for women. And whereas approximately fifteen point five million children are exposed to domestic violence every year, children exposed to domestic violence experience terror, isolation, guilt, helplessness, and grief, and have a higher risk of engaging in criminal behavior and substance abuse and becoming victims of crime. And whereas domestic violence impacts the health and well-being of our community, and whereas it is incumbent on every citizen to play a role in preventing and ending domestic violence, now therefore, I Kerry Smith, Mayor of the City of Gerhardt, Oregon, proclaim October twenty twenty-five to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Gerhardt, and encourage all Gerhardt residents to join in this observance. All right. Now, council concerns. Sharon, you have some? Alina?
Preston?
Nope.
Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.
Thank you, Chad. Thank you, Garrett.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Christie.
Thank you, Chief.
Chad.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.